I'd like to call the board to break your meeting notes for today. Would you please join me in a quick celebration? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Shepard Rami?
Here.
Councilmember Talt?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Here.
Mayor Yudi?
Here.
Posting the agenda. The agenda is posted 72 hours prior to each meeting at the City Hall, the Crowe Public Library, and the Recreation Department. It is also posted on the city's website. The City Council welcomes public input. At this time, the public may address the City Council on items not on the agenda. Pursuant to state law, however, the council may not discuss or take action on any of the issues not on the agenda. Please note that all comments will be limited to three minutes. They will be timed by staff. I now would like to ask City Clerk Baker to explain how public comment will work for this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. For each item on the agenda, there will be time for public comment. We will accept comments in three ways. We will take in-person comments for each item. Please fill out a speaker card and turn it in to me if you wish to speak on an item. You will also accept comments via email sent to cityclerk@cityofsanmarino.org. The email address is also found on the agenda. These will then be read into the record. We must receive these emails before the public comment period for the particular item ends. The comments may be summarized, if necessary, to limit it to under three minutes. We will then ask for comments from our Zoom participants. We ask for public comments via Zoom. There are two ways you can let us know you would like to speak. First, you can use the raised hand feature, which is a button that's found by clicking on Participants, and then clicking on Raised Hand on the bottom right side of the screen. Please do not use this feature until we have asked for public comment, or else we may not see it or know which item you are asking to speak on. As a second option, you can send a message using the chat box saying you would like to speak on this particular agenda item. Comments will be accepted only until the end of the public comment period for that item. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone here wish to speak this evening? Seeing none, is there anyone in the digital world that would like to speak?
There are no requests for comments.
Thank you. City Manager, do we have a report for this evening?
We sure do, Mayor. Thank you so much. And we'll wait for the presentation to come up in the PowerPoint. So close. While we're getting ready for that to come up, I will be starting off, most importantly. Oh, it worked. Okay, but now I've pushed the button so many times. Okay, all right. I would like to formally introduce the council and welcome Rebecca Bridgford, who is sitting. Where did she go? There she is, right out there. She's our new Parks and Public Works manager. Sorry, Parks and Public Works manager. She replaces the retiring Dean Warner. She came aboard 10 days ago. Today is day 10. Is that right? Day 10? All right. She comes to us most recently from the city of Irvine, where she managed quite a large scope of things. And she's already been taking charge and getting some things together. So we really are delighted and honored to have her as part of our organization. And I look forward to you all having a chance to get to know her. She is super fantastic, and we're very lucky to have someone of her caliber. So welcome aboard, Rebecca. Happy to have you. Continuing along in the happy news. I know this is a lot of text for one slide, but I have some awesome things to share with you this evening as it relates to code enforcement. I know that that's not a sentence that you normally hear. Code enforcement is a very challenging business, and it's very important here in the city of San Marino and a very difficult, challenging job to be done by our code enforcement officers. I am delighted to report that within the last three weeks, with no planning or coordination whatsoever, we received kudos for all three of our code enforcement officers from separate sources, all talking about what a fantastic job that they are doing. You could see Mark Aguilar, who's one of our full-time code enforcement officers, was recognized for his compassion and empathy when assisting her with an issue. Mr. Darnell Burnett is the second full-time code enforcement officer, and he also has been praised for his interpersonal skills. And then, last but not least, Larry Mills, who's our part-time code enforcement officer, has received no fewer than three separate resident kudos on his friendliness, outgoingness, and his... He just waves at everybody. I think that Vice Mayor actually had an encounter with him recently where she was very flattered that he recognized her as Vice Mayor and was excited. And he said, "No, no, no, I didn't know that. I just waved at everybody." So you don't normally find that personality in a code enforcement officer. It is a very difficult job, and sometimes certainly in San Marino it can feel like a thankless job. But we have three outstanding gentlemen who are out there doing good work and building positive relationships, which is not often something that you can say about code enforcement officers. So again, we are incredibly lucky and honored to have these three guys doing such good work on our behalf and in the community. So thank you so much for that. All right, speaking of code enforcement, just a little note that all of your efforts towards code enforcement have indeed paid off. We have increased staffing, which we know was our decision for you to make because it does tap our city resources. But we have been able to make a difference. Last year at this time, we were averaging about 44 open code enforcement cases. We're now well over 100. That means that we are busy bees out there making sure that San Marino stays the quality that we are looking for. So thank you to the council and to the community for that. Of course, at our last meeting, we did adopt the budget contingent, of course, on our fee discussion, which will happen at the June 25 meeting. But congratulations to the council. It's one of the biggest things that we do in a year, if not the biggest thing that we do. And we did get through it with a little bit of time to spare. So thank you so much. I know there's a lot of meetings, and sometimes they run long. We really appreciate it. And then, just last but not least, in terms of COVID, we do, of course, have the June 15 date looming, where we are told that many things will change. Unfortunately, we have not been told specifically what all that means, so we don't necessarily have information to be sharing. We are considering all of the changes that are coming from the state, from the county, and for the city organization ourselves. We also are, of course, required to follow Cal Hoshua rules, so we're looking at that as well. It's a twisty maze with a lot of complicated pieces to it. And as we have new information, we will push that out. If there are any community members listening that are not yet getting our Thursday Weekly Briefing email, I invite you to please go to our website and right on the homepage, if you scroll down just a little bit, there's a button to sign up for the weekly email. And I say that because we include all of our COVID updates in there. We translate it as well into Chinese. So we certainly hope that our community members will take advantage of that if they haven't already. And we will push information out about the changes as soon as we have it. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council?
I have a question.
Please.
No one else does. Any idea as to whether any... If they get rid of, not necessarily the June order, but outside functions and the limitation on, based upon occupancy, do you have any idea if that would include matters for July 4?
If that would include what for July 4?
If... Let's assume for purpose of argument.
Sure.
There's some... Is... Let me stop that. On June 15, are you aware as to what restrictions or any new or different restrictions there would be on outside events?
I am not specifically aware of that, but if the question is, if on June 15, do I think that our normal 4th of July event could have occurred, given what's going to happen on June 15, I would say probably. But we didn't know that earlier. But I would say probably.
Well, no, but we did discuss it. And I'm wondering if, and perhaps legal counsel is here, whether or not we could readdress that issue either today or through an emergency meeting to find out if we could go forward with some 4th of July event that would include fireworks or a gathering at the park. What would I have to do in order to raise that and discuss that?
So Councilmember Talt, this is Stephanie Cow here. In order to... If you're asking what would be necessary to place the item on today's agenda, it would need a 2/3 vote of the City Council. And there would need to be a vote that says, one, there's a need that exists to take action immediately; and, two, the need for the action came to the attention of the city after the agenda was posted. So if council can make a vote to make those two findings, and we can add that item to the agenda to discuss today, alternatively, council can set a special meeting. And so long as there's a requisite notice for a special meeting, that might be a possibility as well.
When would I have to make the motion in order to ask that it be included in tonight's agenda?
So you can make that now if you wanted to add that item to the agenda. And it would just need a 2/3 vote of the City Council, again, to carry. And again, the two things that are needed is, one, there's a need that exists to take action immediately; and, two, there's a need for the action that came to the attention of the city after the agenda was posted.
Well, now that I have the answer to a question that the City Manager came to mind my attention just now, but I would move that we add it to tonight's agenda to readdress whether we could have some function at the park on the 4th of July.
And I'll second that.
Second. Do we go right to the vote, or do we have discussion?
City Attorney, and if you could also clarify what 2/3 means for a five-person council?
Let me bring out my calculator.
I think it's four, but...
Yeah, it's gonna be four. And sorry, if I may, if you could just amend your motion to add it as a particular agenda item number. I'm looking at your agenda right now, and I believe that motion would be to amend it to add it to the agenda as Agenda Item Number 14, if you would like to discuss it at the end of the agenda.
So move. I mean, where it gets matter, where it gets added is not material to me, but...
So we had a so move. Do we have a so second?
We have it.
Can we have a roll call then, please?
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Rami?
Yes.
Councilmember Talt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
No.
Mayor Yudi?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Do we have any other questions or comments of City Manager on her report? Seeing none, we'll move to further readings. Do I have a motion to waive further readings?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Rami?
Yes.
Councilmember Talt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Yudi?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to move on to our first public hearing, the appeal of the design review decision regarding 2275 Oak Knoll Avenue. Could we have the presentation from staff, please, Mr. Cervantes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members of the audience. The item for 2275 Oak Knoll Avenue is before the City Council as an appeal of a denial of the planning commission. This project originated back in March of 2020, where the planning commission initially approved a project for a new two-story house and garage. Subsequent to the planning commission's approval, an appeal was submitted. And on October 14, 2020, the City Council conducted a public hearing on the matter. After the hearing was closed, the City Council motioned to remand the matter back to the planning commission with direction to the applicant to seek a redesign of the project as well as perform additional public outreach with the neighbors. Following such public outreach and the resubmital of the project, the planning commission conducted a public hearing on the matter on January 27, 2021. The changes to the project included a redesign of the front double-height entry structure, new dormers on the front facade roof area of the house, and additional modifications to the project. The results of the public outreach found that the neighbors were in support of the project only if it was their current design. After the public hearing was closed before the planning commission, a motion was made to deny the project. The project was denied on a 4-1 vote. The planning commission found that the project would not be compatible with the neighborhood finding massing scale issues as well as closeness to the street in terms of being not compatible with that neighborhood. Subsequent to this denial, the property owner submitted a timely appeal. Pursuant to the code, the City Council has the options to affirm the decision of the planning commission, remand the matter back to the planning commission with direction, set the item for a future hearing, in this case, a de novo hearing within 75 days, or request a summary of the evidence of the decision of the commission and form a decision on the matter. Staff recommends the City Council select Option D, which is to set the matter within 75 days before itself a de novo public hearing. Given that the council is dark in August and the September timeline, in terms of the September City Council meeting, is well over the 75-day period, the item can be placed on the July 14 hearing or the July 29 meeting. Otherwise, a special call meeting would need to be conducted. If the council agrees with staff's motion, the motion shall state that I move to instruct the city clerk to set the matter for hearing within 75 days before itself as such hearing as shall hear and decide the case de novo. And I open for questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of staff? Dr. Wong?
Yes, just for the record, is a new design, you know, I mean, less than the design that was appealed than the original design? I mean, square footage?
Slightly. I would say that it's slightly smaller. But I will let the architect who is here discuss any details about the project.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepard Rami, do you have any questions of staff?
Yes, I do. Sorry. I don't know. I'm assuming it's on. This particular property, I just wanted to understand the square footage, which was just brought up in part. And so I had a general question. The 5,950 square foot that's in the staff report and in the documents, 40 documents, and even from the applicant, is that the total of the home itself? Does that include any of the other structures that are covered and enclosed, like the garage or, I guess, the barbecue area or the port corchere or the pergola that's also attached to the house? Are any of those considered part of that? I know it comes under lot coverage because that's all the cement, but that's a different calculation. So can you explain to me?
Yes, the 5,950 square feet, that is the maximum allowance for this property, given the size of the lot. Now, in terms of the proposal, the proposal is requesting 5,920 square feet for living square footage. And so the living square footage is going to include the first and second story of the house. In terms of lot coverage, the request is about 5,100, less than 5,200 square feet in lot coverage. Lot coverage is going to include the footprint of the home, the garage, and any other structure that is 100% roofed over. Now, if there are any pergolas or trellises where the structure is open air to the ceiling, those would not be counted as lot coverage pursuant to code.
All right, so those are not lot coverage, the two parts that are extended on the two sides of the houses that go to kind of the lot line?
Correct.
Because they have slats?
Correct.
If they come and they want to protect their car later, and they put a plastic covering on that or see-through on the port corchere so leaves and dirt don't get there, does that... What counts as a full covering?
Yeah, that would then trigger lot coverage. Once you put a solid structure preventing the open-air effect, that is now considered lot coverage.
So then it goes in the lot coverage, but still not livable area?
Correct.
Because it has open side?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. And then, as far as lot coverage, what is the maximum lot coverage?
5,950 square feet.
So same as the square footage calculation?
For a living area, yes.
So living area being the two floors of the home?
Right.
Is 5,920 and 5,950 being the max?
Correct.
But then, how much cement? I'm just gonna say, relax. I understand there are other surfaces. But how much physical hardscape, including the house, is also 5,950?
No, no. So in terms of paved surface, the only time that the city regulates on paved surface is in the front yard area. The front yard area or the front yard may not exceed 45% in paved surface. That could be the driveway. That could be walkways. It can be any surface that doesn't allow for water to percolate down naturally. Within the side and rear yards of the property, there are no provisions to limit the amount of concrete.
All right, so just focusing, I'm sorry, last one, on the front. Does synthetic grass and concrete ridge count as permeable? Or what did you call the surface?
Impervious coverage?
Impervious.
Solid.
Sorry. So if people put fake grass and concretes with six-inch grass fake strips next to squares, is that considered?
So the...
Part in the front yard?
Yeah, so it really depends. Yeah, so it depends on the installation of the artificial turf. Some cases, they solidify the underlayment, which doesn't allow for water to penetrate. That would be considered impervious coverage and limited to the 45% provision. But if the installation allows for water to, you know, to be pervious or to seep down to the ground...
Right. Sometimes the backing says, like, later we talked about, sometimes it has a flow-through, sometimes it doesn't.
Right. So if that's the case, it's not considered impervious surface.
And do we know in this...
In this case, they're below the 45% threshold. And the artificial turf, I believe that's in the front yard in this case. Some parts of it are in the front yard. I'd have to direct that question to the applicant to clarify the installation methods of that.
Okay, because it may contribute. If it did, then that whole square area, which is their driveway, would be... Should be part of the calculation?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Talt, do you have any questions?
Just the only conditional use permit issue is the one for the accessory structure. Everything else was design review that has to be done by the planning commission because we're dealing with a tear-down.
Yeah, I believe that there was a conditional use permit to request a bathroom within an accessory structure. That's now been removed. So all we're dealing with in this case, as terms of what the planning commission looked at and actioned on, is design review matters only.
Okay, then why... I'm noting, and maybe I'm reading this wrong, on page 1-13, 27 to 492, there are criteria for garage structure. It says yards, side yard, required, allowed is five feet, but the proposed is three feet. Wouldn't that require a conditional use permit? Or am I reading that incorrectly?
Can you identify the page again, Councilmember?
It's page 27 and 492. Down at the bottom of the table, it says criteria for garage structure, required, allowed?
Oh, yeah.
Yards, side, five feet. And then this, but this says three feet is what's being proposed. Wouldn't that require a conditional use permit?
Well, to clarify that, a garage is subject to a two-foot setback if it's detached from the main house. Any other type of accessory structure requires a five-foot setback if it's, again, detached from the main house. If there's an accessory structure, whether a garage or a trellis or patio, and it's attached to the house, then that structure must satisfy the same setbacks as the main house. Here, in this case, I know that there are two side wings that are considered patio and trellis structures. Those are attached to the main house. Those satisfy the required setbacks. In terms of the garage, the garage is only subject to a two-foot setback, not a five-foot setback.
Okay, then the required, allowed should say two feet?
Should say two feet, yes.
Okay. That takes care of the issue that I had. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, do you have any questions of staff?
I've got a few, thank you. So can I ask my questions more like a before and then an after in terms of heights and the like? So currently, what is the difference in the ridge line from what was last presented to the planning commission?
Well, the prior rendition included a roof line that was consistent across the entire facade of the structure, called a neoclassical design. The differences now are that there are portions of the proposed house that are dropped, while there's a center portion that remains at the original height.
That was my question. So the center is still at the same height? Okay, and has the pitch changed any, or is it pretty much the same?
It's changed as a result of having to drop the two side panels or the two side sections of the house.
So it's dropped across the whole roof and approximately how much?
I would probably refer that question over to the architect for that detail.
Okay, I'll come back to that in a second. And can you tell me the specifics of how the code reads on circular driveways?
Yes, the code allows for circular driveways by rights only in certain districts or area districts. Districts in the estate down to districts two, they're allowed by rights. But they're still subject to the 45% impervious coverage requirements. The threshold for requiring a design review action is 25%. So in this case, if the amount of impervious coverage or hardscape in the front yard exceeds 25%, it's subject to design review approval or design review action. At no point can the impervious coverage exceed 45%.
Okay, and this has meant that?
Right.
So a final question is, I'm looking at a 3.0 with the front setback facing the east. In the center of the circular driveway is a patch, if you will. Is that a common feature that you see? I'm a little concerned, again, about the impervious coverage that that represents. Or is that just a feature that is added in this particular design?
It's just a feature added to this design. I have not seen that feature in the neighborhood.
Okay.
Can you... I'm sorry, can I just ask, Vice Mayor, were you talking about the medallion when you say the patch?
Yeah.
Or were you referring to some term?
No, we'll call it the medallion.
Okay, in the report, it was the medallion?
Yeah.
In the front yard?
Thank you.
It's hard escape, right?
It is hard escape. Yes, correct.
And then, my next question is, since our design review guidelines talk about floor-to-ceiling entries in that area are strongly discouraged, and we're looking at a house with a fair amount of square footage, what is your calculation of the total floor-to-ceiling area within the home?
Give one second.
Thank you.
Apologies, I was looking for my calculations. I don't have them in front of me.
Would it sound like, because it looks like there's two separate areas where there's open, and could it be somewhere around with the two areas combined, maybe 700, 800 square feet, something like that?
Yes, any of the areas that are that provide a ceiling height of 15 feet or greater are going to be accounted twice for living space, so that sounds accurate.
Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you so much for having answers.
Thank you. I have no questions?
If I may, Mayor, go back to Councilmember Talt's question about the setbacks. Just to clarify, the only time that a garage would require a much wider setback is if it encroaches into the 30-degree plane, meaning if the height of the garage were to encroach into the 30-degree plane, it would have to be pushed back further to avoid that encroachment. That's not the case here. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I had a question as well. Given the height of the residence, I don't know, did the height change from... Because the story poles have not changed, is that correct? Or the applicants don't have to change story poles in between house design changes? Is that correct, or are they required to?
That's correct. In terms of the height of the home, the only difference in height was a result of the architectural change to the roof line.
Which means what?
Which means that if you look at the design in front of you, you'll see the two side wings of a home being dropped down, while the center part still includes the angled pitch. Originally, it was straight across in terms of one consistent height.
Right, and so the story poles do not or do reflect the present height of 39 feet 9 inches or whatever it is?
They reflect the prior design that was in place a year ago.
And do we know the height of that design?
I believe it's 2910.
So it's the same?
It's the same, right.
Okay, and one other question? So I'm looking at the paving calculation, and on their sheet, L1, I don't know where it is, for you guys that look at this in a line. But if the artificial turf that's between the... But if the artificial turf that's between the pavers, that's all in the front yard, is not flow-through, or if there's cement and they're just laying it in some kind of cement gully, or I don't know what you call the little gutter, then this all would count as impermeable?
Correct.
Where does the front yard end? Because it says here that the front yard area is seven thousand five hundred and twenty-five feet. So how far do we go back in a yard? Is it just to the front door?
Yes, so the front yard area is the area between the front facade of the house. So it follows the grooves that have been announced of the front facade.
Okay.
Towards the front property line. That's your entire front yard.
Towards the sidewalk?
Towards the sidewalk, correct.
Okay, so this area is calculated by them or us?
No, by the applicant.
And then the permeable paving is also their calculation of what they're including?
That's correct.
As non-permeable and then permeable. And do we check those calculations?
We check those calculations, I mean, we check the calculations to the best that we can. The example that you used about the, the small grooves of artificial turf, if those are, obviously, those are very difficult to calculate with a, with a scale. So we would rely on the applicant to be, to be forthcoming with the calculations on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, staff from council? I'd like to open up to the appellant's comments. Is the appellant available and would they like to speak at this time? Thank you. Please note that you'll have ten minutes total time for your team to speak. And if you please identify yourself.
Good evening, council members. My name is Adele Chang. I'm with L-C-R-A, the Architects for the Project, representing the owners. I had thought that this was a procedural-type meeting, so I did not come prepared. I do have a presentation that I hope to make at some point. And first, the most important thing I'd like to say before I answer some of your questions is that I request that the councilmen, councilpeople, agree with staff's recommendation to hear this project de novo at the next soonest available date. Based on what we heard in our planning commission hearing, I believe that we did not receive a full and fair hearing. There were many details about the project that were not considered. But beyond that, that's why I would love to have a de novo hearing to know the thoughts of the council. In order to answer some of the questions, all artificial turf was supposed to have been removed. I think that was our direction to the landscape architect, and they may have just missed the little areas, the little strips of grass between the pavers. And in terms of the impervious coverage, we did not consider the artificial turf area as permeable. We just considered the, because it's hard to calculate little tiny strips. So we considered the whole path, the whole paved area with that look to be impervious. So to answer your question. And in terms of the height, through the design process, we have lowered the, we have lowered the overall height of the project. And I think it was overall reduced by two feet. We did that by reducing the first-story plate height as well as the cornice height above the second floor, between the second-floor ceiling and the roof. So things were reduced. But I think because of the cost of doing the story poles and the inconvenience to the owners, the overall, the main mass of the story pole remained. What was changed was the change in the front porch. We, I don't know if the council recalls, in the previous appeal, there were neighbors who were concerned about similarity to their house, which had the two-story neoclassical portico. That has been removed, and the style now follows closely what the design guidelines call a colonial revival style. And so the porch in the front was changed, back to the one-story porch on the story poles. That piece was changed. But I don't believe the story posts were lowered to reflect the two-foot drop from the first planning commission hearing to the second one. The pitch of the roof did not change. I think if we were to lower the pitch of the roof more, it would not be consistent with the colonial revival style, which is really an eastern style, where they did need steeper roof pitches. The circular drive, actually, the proposed circular drive is smaller, and there's less paved area than at the existing house. If you've been to the property, you will find that there's a large, fairly large paved and undifferentiated gray concrete area in the front. And yes, we realize the city does not prefer two-story volumes inside of the house. However, that was one of the things that the owner really wanted to have. So we, they realized there's a sacrifice in square footage. So even though it seems like the livable area is that much, but actually, a portion of that is really air. It's really where we had to count double. And actually, on any stairwell, you know, halfway up, you have to start counting it because, you know, from the, like, the eighth step, it's already more than fifteen feet. So we, we do follow the code. We're not asking for any variances. And it's, it follows the city's codes and ordinances closely, as well as its design guidelines. But finally, I would like to finish by saying, yes, please, we request that the council follow the staff's recommendation for de novo hearing at the next available meeting.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions?
Let's see if staff has any questions. Mr. Talt, do you have any questions?
I do not, thank you.
Dr. Wong, do you have any questions?
No, I don't, thank you.
I, I wanted to add one thing.
Yes, please.
We actually went around the neighborhood, the legal neighborhood, not behind, but along Oakno, and measured every single front yard and plate height. And that'll be part of our presentation once we have the de novo hearing.
Okay.
Hopefully, that will be informative.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd-Romey, do you have any questions?
I just have one.
Please.
Please, ma'am. On the report or the project as it went before planning commission, there was a bathroom attached to the garage. Has that been eliminated, and now that's what's, or is that, there's still a bathroom in that area? I could not see.
It should have been eliminated, because we wanted to keep it simple and, and not have any conditional use permits and so forth. It's just, the, the client is fine with that. They, you know, we don't want a pool bath to drive the whole project, you know, like the tail wagging the dog.
Yeah, I didn't know, because there's still a space behind the garage that's plumped and on this plan. And I didn't know if that was.
No, let me double-check. It should have been removed.
Hold on, I'll, I'll, I have to look through these, because I haven't.
It's a big set.
It is a big set of drawings. If you go to one of the overhead pages, I can even go back to the, the last, well, the L-one, the landscape plan, because that's the quickest to have the whole thing. There is a bump out that's paved eighteen, says pool equipment location. So that's the.
They decided to put pool equipment there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so it's not a bathroom. That's been removed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Do you have any questions, the appellant?
Actually, I don't know if it's the appellant or Director Cervantes. Were the features called out in the, first of all, very nice sets of plans.
Thank you.
Were the doors, windows, and so forth called out in the copy we received? I didn't think I saw them.
Doors and windows. Are you talking about a?
Dimensions, yes.
Are you talking about a door and window schedule? I did not bring the set with me because I didn't.
Was it?
It should be.
It's in there, yes. I did see them this afternoon.
Okay, then we're all set. If, if it's in here, I must have just flipped over it. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I have no questions. I'd like to open this up for, and thank you for coming.
May I bring up something first?
Yes, please.
Yes, Ms. Chan? I have a question for you, right here, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Just curious, did you serve on the planning commission?
I served on the design review committee.
Okay, just want to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask City Clerk Baker, are there any, any individuals online that would like to speak on this?
We did receive one letter that was previously dispersed to council and to the, and posted to the city's website for the public to view. It was from Mr. Logan Yeoh, and he wanted to let you know that he agrees with the planning commission's decision to deny the project. Other than that, I have no other requests for comment on this.
Thank you. Would like to bring this back to council for discussion. And in doing so, would like to recognize that both staff and the appellant have asked for this to go to a de novo, and I know this group is not backed away from that. So if, in the interest of time, I would entertain a motion, and if I don't hear one, we can have our discussion.
I move that this be scheduled for de novo hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romey?
I personally would like to affirm the decision of our planning commission at this time, but I will.
Did say.
No.
Councilmember Talt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. I'd go to item number two, please, the appeal of the conditional use permit for fourteen forty-eight Bradbury. Could we please have the presentation, Director Cervantes?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers of the audience. This item is before the city council as an appeal of denial of the planning commission decision. The project consists of a conditional use permit to permit an existing artificial turf installation. This item was first discovered by code enforcement in February of 2020. The city provided the property owner with a notice of violation to correct the matter or apply for a conditional use permit. Soon after the notice was received by the property owner, the owners submitted their request for a planning commission hearing. On September twenty-third, 2020, the planning commission conducted a public hearing on the matter. Following public testimony, the planning commission denied the conditional use permit, finding detrimental impacts to health and safety. On October twenty-eighth, 2020, the planning commission memorialized their decision by approving resolution PCR twenty-dash-zero-nine. Following this decision, the applicant filed an appeal. While conducting research on this item, staff discovered Assembly Bill eleven sixty-four, which enacted government co-section fifty-three zero eight-seven point seven. The law limits cities from enacting ordinances or laws that prohibit the installation of artificial turf. The law does not prohibit the city's ability of adopting reasonable standards for these types of materials. Given AB eleven sixty-four, staff recommends the city council remand the matter back to the planning commission so that their, so that their action can be reevaluated and rediscussed. And that concludes the presentation. Open for questions.
Thank you. We'll see if we have questions from council. Councilmember Shepherd-Romey, do you have questions on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. To Director Cervantes, I wanted to know if you're aware of, I know that you're at work on putting forward a ordinance or recommendations to planning commission, and then it would go to us in this area. But are you aware of any other cities around us or similarly situated that have moved forward into the area by putting some restrictions? And if so, do they do it on a case-by-case basis, meaning like at this time? Or do they adopt an ordinance?
I haven't, I haven't begun my research on, on the development standards. I know that back in, in 2013, when this first came out, I did the research then and found a number of standards that were already in place at that point. And that's where I, I formulated some of my ideas for developing our, our standards. Of course, they need to be amended, because the law changed to allow for some provisions regarding the drip line around trees. And so that will be a change that I'll be looking at. As part of my research of conducting this new provision, of course, I will go out and, and look at what other cities are doing.
And I'm wondering, in particular, because of this permeability issue, you know, part of it focuses on the turf itself, you know, the look or the materials used and the infill that goes on top that holds it down.
Right.
Which used to be the big problem, because it was made from that rubber, and so it was toxic. But there are two things that still concern me generally about artificial turf in the city, and I'm looking to you for whether it should be done on a case-by-case basis, where depending on the location and the amount, or once we make it's an ordinance, it's going to be more like an over-the-counter.
Correct.
You know, like our tree list, or I'm sorry, our window list, our door roof material list, so it would be like an artificial turf list, if you will. Is that what you're envisioning? I'm just trying to see where this goes.
Actually, that would be a, I didn't think about that, but that would actually be a good idea to establish a resolution identifying pre-approved products. But what I was looking to do is, for example, set standards that limit the amount, a percentage amount, that you can add in your front yard for artificial turf. There's also the, the standard for the height of the, what they call the pile of the artificial turf. And the most important one for me, at least for my research, is the hazardous conditions of, of these rubberized pellets getting into the water sources. Looking at a standard that prohibits those types of materials being used to weigh down the artificial turf.
Right.
One thing that I know for fact is, we can prohibit artificial turf in the parkways, which is city-owned areas. So that prevents the, the materials from getting into the curbs and gutters. Is, to address some of the issues that we have in the city where we don't have sidewalks, I envision having a setback requirement where, within that setback, you could not put artificial turf to prevent the, the material from escaping the property. So those are some of the ideas that I have in mind that will be, bring before the planning commission and eventually city council.
Okay, can you also consider at that time the permeability and the heat issue?
Right.
Because, you know, products perhaps are better now, but those are an ongoing environmental problem. And so if we have to allow it in our city, I wouldn't want it to affect the environment, either the neighbors or people walking by or children walking on it, because we do have areas that are not sidewalks. And so those are, and the heat index is a, is a big factor still remaining because of the material, synthetic turf is synthetic. So it's always going to be thirty degrees hotter than the temperature outside, at least, unless you require a special cool, and some, even this company here has that technology. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Wong, do you have any questions instead?
I mean, do you know which one is more environmental friendly? Artificial turbo grass?
Well, grasses. Of course.
And are we still under drought?
Not at this point, we're not.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Talt, any questions instead?
How much research did you do into Sierra Pro by Rhino turf to ascertain the environmental impact that it would have? Because not all people agree that artificially, artificial turf is environmentally friendly.
Right.
And is there, well, let me ask a more general question. Is there anybody, out there any group, to your knowledge? Is there anybody, out there any group, to your knowledge, that has certified artificial turf as environmentally friendly?
Not that I know of, not even the building in the street that I know of.
Do you know, do they advertise Sierra Pro as environmentally friendly?
The research that we conducted prior to the planning commission hearing, of course, using their brochures, of course, they're going to identify themselves as being environmentally friendly and safe and what have you, but if you were to do research on artificial turf, you're going to find a variety of different opinions about the product. We have not done a deep enough research to determine how credible one is versus the other. So that certainly can be part of the research process before putting together standards for an ordinance.
Well, I'm more concerned with what's on that property now. And because one of the problems in this matter is that they did not obtain, I believe, the permit to begin with.
There, and that's a good question because-
And had they, then we could have done the research
Right.
to ascertain whether or not it's environmentally friendly before.
The only question in my mind is whether a permit would have been required anyways. This is a non-structural element on a property. I can pinpoint a section in the building code that would require a permit for this type of product or this type of installation. Of course, our zoning requirements only address them in terms of prohibition. So other than a business license for the contractor who's doing the install, I'm not convinced yet, based off what I've looked at in our codes, that I could have required a permit for the install.
Well, isn't it go to permeability? I'm sorry, Councilmember, can I just ask follow-up?
Boy, you took it right out of me.
Doesn't it have to do with the permeability of the actual artificial turf? Because some, for example, on the website, this particular product line or company that makes this Sierra Pro, some of them actually say that they have flow-through backing. It is not for Sierra Pro. So isn't permeability something that we regulate in the front yards of cities?
Definitely, yes.
So unless they do a flow-through backed, it is an impermeable thing, especially when you compact the dirt and lay the cloth.
These are all things we direct staff to do after we have our motions.
No, but I'm just following up on, I'm sorry, Councilmember Talt, whether it would be, I still think it would be a permit.
Yes, so obviously, in this case, it's an after-the-fact situation that we're dealing with here. I don't know by fact how they actually installed the product here, whether it's a product that allows for water to seep down naturally or whether it's a solid surface underneath. That's a question that we can pose to the applicant, who I believe is here. I don't see that applicant. Certainly, we can look at a standard that prohibits or prevents a solid surface under the installation of the artificial turf. It's one thing that we can do. One of the ideas that came to my mind just now is a lot of companies sell what they call grass creep, and this is a sort of a honeycomb-shaped product that's plastic that sits below the ground where you can install virtually any product above it and allows for drivability on that system or that surface. So we can look at that as a prohibition to prevent that kind of a system.
If I can just step in here, what I'm hearing staff say is that you have not yet really had the chance to research this. And our decision here tonight is really on this item, to send it back to the planning commission, have staff come up with the correct standards and ordinances for future, and then also to address code enforcement, what's happening with this current installation.
However, if we, I apologize, I got to go.
No, I was just saying, so we might not want to debate the resolution tonight, but really, our decision is, are we going to send this back to planning or not?
Well, but we could send it back with instructions. And so what we're doing is determining by asking these questions whether or not there are certain instructions that we want to provide, not only staff, but more importantly, the planning commission in assessing it on appeal. So it is sometimes necessary. But let me get back to my questioning. I mean, this is not a question, this is a statement. And I have a lot of respect for you, Director Cervantes, but whomever put their hand on this report, reviewed it in any sense, I want to warn you that you calling anything that a volunteer planning commission does as unwarranted and not justified is not the type of language we want in a report. There are better words to use to suggest the planning, you believe the planning commission missed something than calling their action unwarranted and not justified, and also a prejudice to us in any eventual litigation argument we want to make. So please avoid those type of words in the future. Thank you.
I apologize to the council and the planning commission.
Vice Mayor, do you have any questions instead?
Yes, I think where we are right now is about AB 1164. And I feel bad that we're getting into all these variables because this seems to be our first case, if you will, following the passage of it. I don't, I don't know if I saw it in the report. So did that pass maybe in the summer or early fall of 2020, Mr. Cervantes?
When you refer to pass?
1164?
I remember October 2013. That's when...
Thirteen.
AB 1164, that's, for some reason, that's what comes to mind because that's when I researched, when I actually put together a staff report on the matter.
So we, and I'm feeling a little confused, so it's me. So we have had a long-term right to put in artificial grass then.
Correct.
And am I correct in presuming that when this passed, it was silent as to the percentage that could be used maximum on the front of the property, the piles, the pellets, all of that is silent, but the law's been on the books for quite a while.
Correct.
Okay, so then what this is about, as the mayor mentioned, is deciding, you know, what we want to do, but equally important, to really set down what we want going forward, not unlike the roofs that the city permits. Would you envision something similar with artificial turf with regard to these five or six factors, what it must be or what it must have in terms of providing a list for residents?
That actually is a great idea, yes.
Okay, okay, yeah, I just feel bad that we're now getting into all the details about this after the fact. And technically, now it's becoming clear to me, when they were violated through the code, they were technically under the law within their rights.
Correct.
We just hadn't detailed out as a city. I did drive by it and spent some time there, and I saw the method that they used by planting below perimeter shrubs to sort of take away the boundaries of it so that in time it will be pretty well hidden. So I guess that was, you know, the best they could do, but okay. If we do remand it, so it would be with these details going back to the planning commission, correct?
Correct.
All done, thank you.
It was effective January 1st, 2017.
And I have no additional questions to ask. Thank you, Director Cervantes. Is the appellant here? Would they like to speak on this item? Seeing none?
Excuse me, Mayor, I believe they're on Zoom.
Oh, okay, please.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is John Kang. I'm appearing on behalf of my parents who own the property in question here. I just want to take the time to thank the city council for meeting and discussing this matter. I just want to address one point that a council member made about the issue being the property owners did not obtain the permit at the time that the turf was installed. While this was correct, it was definitely an oversight on the service providers' part. However, I'd like to point out that because of, you know, the California government code, we, the property owners were definitely within their right to proceed with the turf without a permit. So I believe that that point is moot. And also, I would appreciate if the council would expeditiously take care of this issue because the appeal was submitted November of last year. And it's been, you know, over seven months now. Significant amounts of money has been spent through the appeal process. As I'm sure, you know, from 2017 to now, I'm sure, you know, this is not the only property that has gone through the entire CUP and appeal process, you know, spending thousands of dollars. So it would be much appreciated if this was resolved as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ask council if there are any questions. The appellant representative, Mr. Talt?
I have no questions, thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Wong?
Yes, the appellant, did you ever contact or design?
We did, and yes, they were gracious to offer to remove the turf if needed and replace it with, you know, real grass, but obviously, that's not needed anymore at this point.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, are there any questions?
No, thank you.
And I do not have any questions either. Thank you very much for appearing. Opening it up for public comment, City Clerk Baker, is there anybody that has any public comment on this item?
I have no request for comment on this item.
Okay, before we close the public session, are there any final questions from council for staff or the appellant? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments and bring it to council for deliberations. Dr. Wong, start with you.
Well, I did my research. A person can live without water for three days, and a person cannot live without oxygen for three minutes. So I don't agree with, you know, going artificial because of, you know, I mean, we allow pollution here. So I really wish that, I mean, just to the appellant, if you can change back to grass, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd-Romney, any thoughts on this?
Thank you, Mayor. I also would rather see, like Councilmember Wong, grass in our city, we're a historic city, we're known as a tree city, and I think almost everybody who drives through thinks the natural beauty of our gardens and parkway and parks and medians, as well as front yards, adds a lot of financial value to the community and makes it noteworthy. That's why we are an unusual bastion of all that. So for me, and there are, with this product, in particular, I tried to do some research into Sierra Pro, which is the grass that they're using that's called out, as well as their infill, which, you know, used to be the most toxic part. And they're using something called Zeophill, which is Deodorizer. So it has a natural pumice stone in it, I guess, to keep the pet smell off or down. However, neither one of those talks about the permeability of the product. And there's a five-step procedure you can see in the book here about how they installed it by removing three to five inches of the soil and the grass, and then the soil, then compacting it, then adding synthetic material, then compacting that, then adding fabric, then adding the artificial turf, and then adding the pellet, well, pumice pellet on top. And so basically, when all that is done, they've killed everything in that yard, for sure. And it's, the longer it sits there, the more damage it does to everything that's below it, tree roots, microorganisms, and everything else. And I'm really concerned about this particular product because it's not permeable, doesn't have that flow-through backing that they have. And additionally, there's nothing about the heat. And the heat can get very hot on these, and they actually make cool treated grass blades that have different materials on them. And none of this, the infill or the turf itself, deals with those two things that are so crucial to our community and our environment. So I have a problem with this particular product.
Mr. Talt, any thoughts?
Yeah, I, yes, pardon me. I generally agree with the statements by both council members regarding the product in general, but I think we should remand it back to the planning commission and see if they can make specific findings regarding why this product may be dangerous to the health of welfare, basically the health of San Marino. Because I knew, I do know there is a variety of opinions out there as to the effect on the environment, effect on the health in use of the type of chemicals that go into this. So I would remand it back with the idea that they make specific findings regarding, that would be a better protect us if ultimately we decide to deny the use of this product. We're very careful about the products we use in this town. We're very careful with roofing material, and we should be very careful as well with and the various materials you can use in your house. We should be very careful about what people put on their lawns because you have pets that might venture out there, or coyotes and peacocks might get sick. It is something that we should remain back and ask them to make very specific findings on this.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, any thoughts on this?
Yes, thank you. So I, you know, all of us are disappointed with what the state is taking over that the city used to have full control about. And artificial turf is certainly one that we probably are all humanists in really not liking. But the state has determined that it's the homeowner's right, and I think it's crucial at this time that we send this back to the planning commission. I think there's four or five different parts of this that really need to be addressed. And I don't know if it would be appropriate, but if it is, to have our city attorney weigh in as to when this was installed and how our code was at that time with regard to doing it with or without a permit because we cited them over something we thought was not legal, but technically it was. And then after the fact, we concur that we do have worries over this particular product. But in coming back to us, if we do remand it, I would like to request what I had previously mentioned, that we really get some future guidelines that are pretty well researched, and this will take quite a bit of research to see what products out there would be endorsed. And that would, of course, come from our staff and confirmed by the planning commission and then brought to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, and I agree with the things I've heard from the council, relieved on a go-forward basis that staff can help craft the right ordinances for approved products. Do I have a motion on this item, please?
I move to remand conditional use permit number CUP 20-10 to the planning commissions with instructions to provide further findings on the health welfare, health and welfare of the use of this product in the city.
Thank you. Is there a second?
May I offer an amendment?
You always like to.
You may give it a go.
That doesn't surprise me. What would you like to add?
What I had mentioned about setting standards and going forward so that we won't have the same problem again, aside from just this product.
That would be something that I think would be separate from this motion.
Okay, then I will make a separate motion. Thank you.
Is there a second to Mr. Talt's motion?
I'm sorry, just to clarify, I have one question. So you want them to find, make, we would remand this with direction to make specific findings to support the denial?
Yes.
Correct, then I will second it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Talt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Is there another motion I'm hearing in the room?
I don't know. Maybe I should ask staff if it would be appropriate for us to make the second motion or if that is something that could come from your respective department, what is the preference?
Well, yes, I am already working on standards. Uh, we have some ideas tonight that came out that I'm, I'll be adding to the list of standards.
It can also be an item for future agenda topic.
And it is also a future item.
Let, let's just take it sooner rather than later, so we don't run into this again then if we can add that. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we will move on now to item number three, approval of historic designation determination and Mills Act contract for 1779 Lombardi Road. Director Cervantes, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council, and members of the audience. The property owner for 1730, 1779 Lombardi Road requests approval by the city council to formally designate the property known as 1779 Lombardi Road as a historic landmark. On March 24th, 2021, the Planning Commission took formal action to recommend such designation and memorialized such decision through Resolution PCR 20 dash 03. As part of this application, the property owner is also requesting approval of a Mills Act contract. In summary, the property is found to be eligible for historic designation through the historic assessment performed by Historic Resources Group and through efforts of Architectural Resources Group, who was our consultant, who assisted the city with its citywide historic survey. In both documents, it lists the property being eligible for various forms in turn, including, um, architectural integrity. Given the findings of the consultants, staff finds that the property is eligible for historic designation and recommend the city council motion to that effect. As a historic landmark, the property qualifies for a Mills Act contract. The intent of the Mills Act contract is for the property owner to secure savings by virtue of property tax savings and use those savings to perform very specified improvements to the home each year within a 10-year contract or period. For council's reference, please see attachment four for the 10-year work plan, uh, uh, performed by the applicant. The fiscal impact to the city will be approximately $17,000, which will be the annual property tax savings for the property owner. That being said, staff recommends that the city council adopt Resolution R 21 dash 19 and approve the historic designation and then approve the Mills Act contract that's attached to the report. I open for questions.
Thank you. A good question from council. Dr. Wong, any questions to staff?
No, thank you.
Uh, councilmember Tal?
No questions.
Councilmember Shepard Romy, any questions?
Uh, just one follow-up to our conversation the other day. Do we have any Mills Act, um, properties? Do we have any designated and things, uh, under Mills Act contracts, I guess, uh, at this time?
This will be the first.
Thank you. Thank you. Wow.
Vice Mayor, any questions to staff?
No, just delighted that we're getting our first.
This is a first. No questions for me either. Uh, is the appellant available and would they like to speak? I'm sorry? The applicant, I'm sorry.
The applicant is not available tonight. There are, um, uh, back east, uh, at a work.
Okay. All right, open this up for public comment. Are there any individuals that would like to speak on this?
Yes, Mr. John Dustin, go ahead.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. If I may ask, uh, to be able to share my screen, I wanted to display a side-by-side comparison from two pages of the agenda packet to help sort of facilitate my comments. Would that be okay?
If we can technically figure it out, absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Dustin, you should be able to.
All right, thank you. Uh, so, let me...
We see the documents library?
Yeah, I'm... Hang on a second, that's blocking me. Okay, this is what I wanted to show. Uh, so you should be seeing, um, a side-by-side display of page 266 and 255 of the agenda packet for this meeting. Is that what you're seeing?
We're not seeing it yet, no. Looks like the PDF has not opened up. Or you need, might need to find it as it is opened up and share that document. Because we see your files now.
Hmm, all right, let's try this.
It on your computer?
Yeah.
Do a new share and find, there you go. Now we see it.
Great. All right, so, um, what you're seeing here is a, a side-by-side display of page 266 and 255 of the agenda packet. Uh, on the left, you can see the original design for the colonnade structure of this home. And on the right, you can see the current, more contemporary design of the colonnade structure. So previously, it was these very elegant, um, refined columns and arches. And now it's a more sort of boxy, uh, brutish, uh, design. I think there's a high likelihood that the original structural components of these columns and arches are still in existence and are encased in the larger boxy columns that you see now. And, uh, so basically, my concern is, is that, uh, if the homeowner or any future homeowner of this property decides to do any extensive work on that colonnade structure, that the contracts stipulate that that original work not be damaged, destroyed, altered, or moved, removed in any way to preserve the ability for a future homeowner who may want to restore that original colonnade design, which I feel is a much more elegant design, it's much more true to the architectural style. If, if that gets lost in a, in a remodel, any future homeowner won't have the ability to restore it, should they choose to undergo that. So, I'm not an attorney, but when I was reading through this, it seemed to me like Exhibit D in the packet is part of the Mills Act contract. And I'm not sure if I'm right on that, but if I could call your attention to, um, bullet points nine and 10 of that exhibit, it kind of has language that looks like it might protect that original existing structure from the kind of inadvertent damage that I'm talking about. But I don't know. So my suggestion to the council is that you ask the city attorney and/or Director Cervantes, uh, their opinion on that, whether or not the contract as written would sufficiently protect that original design, or should it continue to exist encased in these new columns? Uh, and if, if it does protect it, then you're good to go. But if not, I, I would suggest that the council ask that the contract language be revised to specifically address that concern. Uh, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dustin. Does any council member have any questions, Mr. Dustin? Seeing none, is there any other public comments on this item?
There are another request for comment.
Okay. Then I'd like to close the public hearing and bring it back to council for deliberations. Councilmember Shepard Romy, what are your thoughts on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I, um, am happy that we would, uh, I historically designate, um, a beautiful home. I appreciate, uh, Mr. Dustin's, uh, analysis and interest in this and that, um, the columns have changed. So I think that is a thoughtful addition, uh, to make, should we move forward with the historical designation that whatever is preserved, hopefully under the thicker square column, uh, for the future of the house. Uh, but other than that, I'm, I'm supportive of designating it. And I think it is a beautiful home with the facade on the outside and it will benefit our city to have it at the Mills. We should move forward with the Mills Act.
Thank you. Dr. Wong, any thoughts on this?
Yes, I concur and, um, yeah, I think, uh, we should keep that in bio, just in case in the future, for the future owner, if he wants to restore it, the condition. And I can support this. Thank you.
Uh, councilmember Tal?
Yeah, I agree that. I've been inside the house, around that house. And it is, uh, quite beautiful and Mr. Fisher Dustin, uh, raises a good point that hopefully, uh, could be addressed in whatever Mills Act contract, uh, that, if it can be, uh, added to whatever Mills, uh, Act contract we ultimately execute. Uh, I guess, would we have to amend it or I, I, I guess we're approving the contracts that we would have to.
The, the council can certainly amend the contract, at least the language in the contract to include, um, language to, to protect the columns. I was looking at the, the work plan and it does not identify, um, modifying these columns at all. Uh, uh, looking at the exterior renovations that they have in place or in mind, doesn't include, um, touching these columns. In fact, it, it calls out painting mostly for exterior work. So I don't see this as being part of their 10-year work plan. But certainly, the council can amend the contract to include language to protect these columns.
But it's not protecting the columns that are there right now, but what may indeed be underneath. But we don't know if they are. So, um...
If you're protecting something on the outside, you're protecting something that's on the inside as well.
Right. Uh, but, uh, to Mr. Dustin's point, it was that based upon his experience, what he's seen as a commissioner and so forth, that the original columns may indeed be underneath plaster, um, or, or other cement there. And i- and if someone wanted to bring those back to its original, uh, look, that they should be allowed to do it without violating the Mills Act contract.
Okay. Okay. Anything else, sir?
Nope.
Okay. Vice Mayor, any thoughts or comments?
Uh, I concur with everything that is, has been said. I attended the Planning Commission meeting where this was presented and I am just so delighted the owners care this much. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Uh, do we have a motion, please? Going once? Going twice?
I'll, I'll pick the motion. Hold on, I'm sorry, I was looking at the work plan to see in, if any of the descriptions touched on work that might affect the columns. I move to adopt Resolution number R dash 21 dash 19, approving the historic landmark designation for the property known as 1779 Lombardi. And approve the Mills Act contract with the amendment that the exterior columns will not be further modified if internally the original columns exist.
Okay, thank you.
That's my attempt.
Is there a second for her?
Can they restore it back?
Yeah, I think restoration.
Or they can restore it back to what it was like, what, what they were like before.
Okay, then I will take that amendment.
Okay, so we have an amended motion? Okay.
Hold on a second.
Thank you. We, it's, it's moved and seconded. It is, roll call, please?
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Romy?
Yeah.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Udi?
Thank you, yes.
Motion passes.
We'd like to move on to new business now. Item number four, uh, the financial report for the third quarter. Can we please have the presentation from Director Chung?
Great, thank you, Mayor and, uh, Vice Mayor and City Council. Uh, as the presentation comes up on the screen, um, I have City Treasurer and I, we'll be reporting the financial status report for the quarter ended January, oh, sorry, March 31st. So cover January through March 2021. The clicker is working. Okay, thank you. So I'll be just covering the financial information and then, uh, the City Treasurer will just brief the council on the cash investments section of the report. Let me begin, uh, the revenue side. The clicker, okay. Um, on the revenues, for the General Fund and Public Safety Fund, uh, we collected $17.3 million as of March, uh, thir- March 31st, 2021 versus la- uh, year, uh, year-to-date before, previous fiscal year, sorry, I'm having hard time talking, uh, $17.9 million. So that decrease that you're seeing is mainly driven, of course, by COVID. Last year, during that period, COVID was just beginning. But for this particular period, reporting period, of course, we've been in a COVID, um, e- environment the whole time. So of course, the revenues were down during this period versus last year. But of course, on the expenditure side, we also saw a decrease of expenditures. Uh, expenditures were $17.1 million versus last year was at $17.5. So you see that decrease in expenditures. And that, of course, is due to the facility closures and pers- uh, the limited services that were provided to the community due to COVID. And also on the public safety side, though, uh, we did see some increases. And that's just mainly driven by the personnel increases due to the MOU increase of 2% and then the pension costs as well. Moving on to the net income. Come on, okay. The net, net income, I break it out between the General Fund and the Public Safety Fund. On the General Fund side, uh, we ended the quarter at $7 million versus last year at $6.9 million. So we did see a slight increase, so that's a, that's a good sign there. On the Public Safety Fund side, we did see a net decrease of $6.8 million versus last year at $6.5 million. And, and that larger decrease is mainly, as I mentioned, driven by personnel costs on the public safety side. And lastly, for my slide here, the fund balance. Um, on the General Fund balance side, we ended the quarter at $13.4 million versus $11 million last, um, last year. So that shows that our general fund remains healthy. On the CIP fund balance side, we ended the quarter at $16.5 million versus last year at $18 million. And the reason for that decrease is, uh, we budgeted a lot bigger, uh, CIP budget this particular year. So we do naturally see that fund balance decreasing as we're using the CIP reserves to pay for the projects this year. And, uh, we'll, uh, direct to the city.
Real quick question, Paul, on, on the, uh, revenues that are down 560, you said a lot of that was COVID. So we'll be able to recoup that from the 2.4 that we should be getting?
Uh, yes, yes, that'll be part of the 2.4. Well, a portion of it is 1 point, half of it will be the 1.2 million that we'll be getting this fiscal year.
But I mean, that's, that's normal lost revenue.
Yes.
But we...
Yes, the most lead driven from recreation side. But we do, the next reporting period, you will see a big increase in the property tax side too. So I will show that to council on the next, uh, quarter report.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And I will direct to, uh, your attention to the City Treasurer for her section. Thank you.
Real quick on my two slides. This one here is our total portfolio as of the end of March 2021 is about $33,700,000 versus a year ago, March 31st of 2020, it's about the same, $33,331,000. We're looking at $450,000 increase between the two years. It's pretty strong. Next slide. Again, we're doing a comparison between our yield and LEAF one-year treasury, five-year treasury. And, um, there's an an increase for five-year treasury for the first quarter of 2021. As of the end of March, five-year treasury is yielding at 0.92%, which is a lot higher than the one-year treasury that we've been seeing below 0.1%. It did go up to 0.99, but never went over 1%, but it came down recently. It's now at 0.75. City's yield as of the end of March is at 0.56%. But this gives Director Chung and myself an indication what we should do as our next step regarding our liquidity. There are two ideas that we're thinking about. The first one is, with the liquid cash we have in our portfolio, we can start thinking about buying bonds at par with non-callable feature for the first year and with maximum of five years. And those are yielding about 0.9% at this point. And also, we can start looking into certificate of deposits with good financial institutions, with great quality rating and fully FD, FDIC insured up to $250,000. And also, again, we can do maximum of five years. That's what our investment policy allows. And that's currently yielding about 0.85%. Uh, Director Chung and I, uh, have scheduled a few meetings that we'll be talking to investment counselors. And these are the investment firms that's on our approved list. We're gonna start having some dialogues regarding what we should plan for our liquidity, um, in the future, for the next... in the future, for the next quarter. And as far as our end of our cash report as of the end of April, April 30th, there's one line item which is new, and that's the line item above LEAF with $250,000, and that's our investment with 115 Trust through CalPERS. And because this is as of the end of April, so we only did one of our three fundings of $250,000. The total together is half a million dollar, half, $500,000. So that was the first funding as of April 1st, and we subsequently did the following two, but that was in May and June. Director Chung and I will come back with a full performance report for 115 Trust as of the end of our second quarter, which is June 30th. And so far, it's been doing great. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chamber. Are there any questions from council of staff? Mr. Talt?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
I have no questions. Thank you. Ms. Han, it's good to see you. And I appreciate you.
Dr. Wong?
No questions. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you for the research, trying to get us something going forward. Thank you.
I have no questions, but appreciate the excellent work that continues to happen in finance. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment or speak on this item?
There are no requests for comment on this item.
Great. Good night. To bring it back to council for deliberation, do any council members have any other thoughts or questions? Seeing none, is there a motion, please?
I'm moved to receive and file the financial status report for the third quarter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yeah.
Councilmember Talt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We go on to consent calendar now. Do any council members wish to pull anything from consent with the reminder that if you want to vote against one item, you can do that as we do the roll call. I would like to pull item number nine because there's someone from the public that would like to speak on that. Would anybody else like to pull any other items? Do I have a motion then to approve items 5, 6, 7, 8, 10, 11, 12, and 13?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Talt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We'll address now item number nine, and perhaps we can hear the public comment because I think we've read through the document.
Mr. Dustin?
Mr. Dustin, what are your thoughts on this, please?
Thank you, everyone. So I'm just going to make, I have a couple of real specific comments, and then they get more general. So I'll start with the specific ones. First, a comment I have is that on page 461 of the agenda packet, in the bottom of the page, the bottom bullet point, I noticed that throughout this contract, there seemed to be an attempt to remove language that referred to business days because the contract specifies that they are going to be available every day. And in this particular bullet point, it says, "Routine calls received during non-business hours shall be handled during the next business day." I just, for clarity, that should read the next day. And then my next comment is on page 463 of the contract. So in general, I was a little uncomfortable because in a few places, there's language in this contract that basically says that Pasadena Humane can charge a reasonable fee, and it doesn't specify what that is. So as a resident who might be paying those fees, I just, I'm a little uncomfortable with not specifying the exact amount. So I mean, the first instance of that is on page 463. Second bullet point from the top, Pasadena Humane may assess a reasonable impound fee. There's also another point on page 466 of the contract. Again, below the bullet points, the first bolded heading there, Pasadena Humane may charge the public fees or waive fees with the exception of licensing fees for those services at its sole discretion. So basically, for everything bullet pointed in the contract is the services that they provide, they can, if it's something that impacts a resident directly, they can charge a fee for it, which is not an unreasonable request. But again, it doesn't say anywhere in here what those amounts are going to be, and that just makes me a little nervous. And then the last thing I wanted to say was just sort of a general comment for your information is that, you know, we're slowly moving to a less customer-friendly process with specifically dog licensing. You know, if you go to our city website and you look up animal services or animal control, I think it's listed under, it basically gives you a link. If you click on that, it takes you to the Pasadena Humane Society website. And then when you go there and you start trying to figure out information on dog licensing, it takes you to a third-party vendor site, Direct Pets, that they contract with to do that. So now I'm like three vendors removed from the entity that I live in and trying to figure out how to answer questions about dog licensing. Just so happens, I got my renewal email last week from this third-party vendor, which I didn't even know is contracted with Humane Society until I started digging into it. So one of the frustrations that I've had for a long time is that, for example, the Humane Society charges me when my dog tag is no longer readable and I need to replace it, not because I lost it or I was negligent in any way, it's just because they use cheap aluminum tags that over the years get mangled and they're not readable. They charged me $25 to replace that tag. I can buy a stainless steel tag that will last longer than my dog will ever live for $8 on the internet. So I'm not sure why that exists. But I did find out this new licensing program, if you want to do it online through this vendor of theirs, they charge you an additional administrative fee, which at first I was upset about, but I dug into it a little bit further, and it actually worked out to my advantage because if you go with the online vendor, even though you pay the administration fee, they will give you a tag for no charge every year. Whereas if I go to the counter at the Humane Society, according to their website and the people I spoke with, they won't. So it worked out for me in the end, but it's a very complicated process, and I spent a lot of time on the phone with the Humane Society staff, with the Direct Pet staff. Most residents are probably not as stubborn and mule-headed as I am to figure all that out. And so I just want to let you know, we're moving in a direction of less customer-friendly processes. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Appreciate the feedback. So I hear two things, there's some contractual questions, and then there's a potential attitude that will ask the city manager to pick up the attitude issue with the Humane Society. Does staff have any comments on the contractual question?
Yes, Commander, Police Commander Rich Ward is here. This is his item, and he facilitates this. He's via Zoom. Also, Dia Duvernay, who's the executive director.
I can't hear you. I'm speaking very fast. Sorry.
Hello? Testing. Are we on?
Yep.
Better? Okay. Commander Rich Ward is here from staff to present the answers from the staff side. Also, Dia Duvernay, who's the executive director of Pasadena Humane, is on Zoom as well. And actually, I would bounce the customer service questions over to her for answers.
Okay. Who would you like to speak first, please?
Commander?
Yes, ma'am. I'm not sure that I understand the first question. Can you hear me?
We are barely able to hear you. Can you give that one more shot?
Yes, I'm available for any questions regarding the contract.
I heard two questions. One was on the first page of the contract, the final bullet, it's been crossed out between regular business hours.
Yes, and that was crossed out because we were trying to be more specific exactly what year in regular business hours, what that means. They provide a number of different services that have different business hours. So specific to this contract, they wanted to make sure it was clear that they're available to respond to routine calls from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week.
Okay. And then I also heard from Mr. Dustin on page 9 of 23 of the contract, the second bullet that the Humane Society may assess a reasonable impound fee, and he was questioning whether there's a definition about reasonable.
The language I'm seeing, I don't see the term reasonable.
I guess the question comes, what happens if they think it's reasonable and we don't?
Mayor, at your pleasure, you might, we might bring Dia into this conversation. She might be able to address some of these.
Okay.
Dia, do you want to address some of these questions?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. The impound and licensing fees are actually established by code. So the other fees that are referred to, that we may charge a reasonable fee, would be a reasonable fee to remove a dead animal from a private property and also a reasonable fee to go out to an owner's home and for an owner surrendered animal if the owner was incapable of bringing the animal to the shelter. So that would be, you know, some sort of circumstance where the owner was not capable of bringing the animal to the shelter themselves. So those, I believe those are the two places where it refers to a reasonable fee. That's how the language existed in previous contracts, I believe, as well. So, and as regards to the customer service and licensing issue, we have just recently contracted with DocuPet to help with online licensing renewal capability. That's something that was not available in the past. People either had to mail in or come in to pay, and so we went to offer the option for online payment. But certainly, if people do not wish to go through paying online through DocuPet, they can come to the shelter or they can mail in payment.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do any council members have any other questions?
Yes, I have questions.
Please.
I think I had asked a city manager, and I didn't get, how much are we presently being charged and what was the proposed contract?
Yes, apologies for that, Councilmember. You actually did get it this afternoon, but I know you may not have seen it. Let me just pull that email up. Hold on just a moment, please. I'm sorry, I'm not finding it on a quick search. Commander Ward, can you answer that question? This is a question about what's the current contract and what would it be going to? It's the information you provided earlier today.
I think Chief may have. I just didn't see it in time before coming here.
Sure. Commander, you may not know that you're muted. I don't know if you're trying.
Sorry.
No problem.
No, I believe our current contract is roughly $93,000 for the year, and next year is budgeted $81,000.
Thank you very much.
Well, plus, they now get 100% of the fees.
That is correct.
That's a loss on our part, but I don't know how much loss that is.
And they get.
We don't know much.
We used to get the impound fees and half of the dog licensing.
Right.
And now both of those are gone.
My recollection, Dia, you'll need to correct me on this or speak to it, but my recollection is that the contract that was negotiated here and the pricing structure, which was agreed to and worked on by the entire San Gabriel Valley, so every other city that's with Pasadena Humane is doing the same contract with similar pricing structure. And I believe, and again, Dia, this is where I might need you, I believe that this just netted those revenues out, so we don't actually see a difference. Dia, can you, can you help me out here?
Right. We did offset the contract amount by the amount of licensing fees that were returned to the cities. We did not offset the contract amount by the impound fees, which is a lesser amount. And I don't have those exact figures in front of me, but that's why there was a reduction over the base contract amount because it was offset by the amount of licensing fees that were returned to the city last, in the previous year.
What's the order of magnitude?
The order of magnitude is approximately $12,000, which is why the contract drops from $93,000 to about $81,000. It does work its way up with the CPI not to exceed 3%.
So it's an under $15,000 hit?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion from council? Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to ask one more question.
Please.
Thank you. I'm not sure who would be the correct person, maybe Ms. Duvernay on this one. What is the current fee for the pickup of a dead animal or a surrender?
I'm going to ask Lieutenant Artiaga to chime in if he knows the exact fees that we're charging, and because the fees in the current structure are so variable amongst the cities, and I don't have them in front of me, I don't want to comment on it, but I can certainly get back to you on that.
Yeah. I'm actually out in the field, so I don't have the fee scheduled for each of the cities. But I do want to clarify that the fees that are charged for animals, deceased animals that are picked up from private properties, those fees only apply if the animal is owned by the property owner. So in other words, if a stray animal wanders into the property and dies there or wildlife dies on the property, then we don't charge for it. We don't charge.
I was just wanting to hear what felt reasonable.
Yeah, well, I guess we can certainly get back to you tomorrow morning with those prices in terms of stray, I mean, not stray, but owned animal surrenders and deceased animal pickups. They're actually, you know, very, very low compared to other agencies. But we can, I can certainly give you those ones. I just unfortunately don't have those with me at the time because I'm out in the field.
Thank you very much. Any other final questions?
But I learned that if an animal dies on a property, it's moving next door.
Next door, yes. All right. Do I have a motion, please, on item number nine?
I move to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement approved by the city attorney with Pasadena Humane Society for animal care control services.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yeah.
Councilmember Talt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Let it be noted that at 7:48, we are moving off of our normal agenda item to newly added agenda item number 14 entitled, "What Can We Do to Celebrate the Fourth of July?"
Yes.
Mr. Talt, would you like to make staff presentation?
Well, no, I'm going to.
Not that there's any pressure.
It was my agenda item that I asked, and since our 3-2 decision last time to do not have a park celebration with fireworks, the band, I have received many, many negative comments, such to the effect that I can't even go out for a walk anymore without somebody getting mad at me. And so I direct them towards the other people. Don't talk to me. But I do think that, you know, given that we, given that there's going to be a substantial change in our ability to bring people together at the park on Fourth of July and to put on a fireworks display with a band and if, I mean, maybe even food trucks, if we can put that together, I think it's doable, and I think we should reconsider our decision and move forward with the Fourth of July that includes fireworks and celebration in the park.
So is that a motion then to task staff, we're seeing what can be?
No, it's a motion for staff to do it and find with fireworks and a band and then an option, if we could get food trucks, that would be wonderful, too.
My concern at this point is we're about 24 days out, including the final preparations, and we had talked earlier about how it was difficult at a late date to pull all of this together. And I want to be, I think my main concern is being respectful towards staff. We, if I understand, Dr. Marlowe, that, well, maybe I should ask, what is currently being planned?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. There is a current slate of events that I walked you through, I believe, at our last, a month ago, council meeting in my city manager's report, that are events that are slated to take place all week, the week leading up to it. And then, of course, we have our second annual home decorating event that is planned to be underway.
So where would you see, and my sole concern is the impact on staff because of what was previously put in place. Would you see the ability to? Would you see the ability to either cancel those things or to somehow redirect staff on the days leading into it and to be able to obtain the services that are requested for the Fourth?
So this is a bit awkward. Obviously, this item was added as an emergency item as a result of the changes that the council just heard about. So we really had no time to prep for this. I, with three and a half weeks, I, I don't see how we do what we're currently doing plus a Fourth of July event. So I imagine there would need to be some trade-offs if the council did indeed direct us to do something for the Fourth of July. I would think, although I don't know, because we, we haven't had a chance to talk about this, I would think that the events leading up to the Fourth of July probably go away if staff redirects their focus. I do know, just because I had asked in preparation for the last meeting that we had when we discussed this, that the date that we had received from the fireworks vendor as the latest date that we could let him know was the day after that council meeting. So we have lost our opportunity with that fireworks vendor. I don't know what other vendors might or might not be available and what process RFP bid or so forth we might need to go through on that front. So that piece of information I have, I, I think something, to put this event together in three and a half weeks, when we normally take six months, I, I think it's fair to say something's going to have to get.
I, I, I think, or I would agree, it's harder to put together the old-fashioned one that takes six months. But I really think the question is, you know, given where we are today, you know, what can be done? And then, no, you don't know because you didn't get the question. So I think we need to give staff a directive, but, you know, a few days to, to think about this and see what they can pull off.
Well, then how do we get about making this decision?
Well, we.
Special.
If, if, if we need another meeting, we can't wait until the end of June to do it.
We can have a special meeting. I think we just owe them the courtesy of being able to see if they can, how much they can turn on the dime. And whatever we can do, I'm happy and supporting. But, you know, this is a, a change in what is currently in place. And I just want to be respectful of that, but we can have another special meeting.
If, if we're in agreement with a special meeting, I, I'm fine with it. Let's not delay in a special meeting. What's the minimum amount of required time we could, we could have?
Well, why not also, though, give a maximum? I, I don't recall the figures, but I don't know if you do or, or somebody on staff here, how much we usually spend on fireworks and whatever other. And then, so we would set a ceiling and they would try to find fireworks from some vendor within that budget and we wouldn't have to hold them up. They could contract, and if it's more, you know, come to us with more, call a special meeting, but they could proceed forthwith tomorrow in trying to organize this event instead of having a special meeting that called meeting to get notice. I mean, that all adds more time, which is more of a problem. You know, if, if she can't, or, or they can't, I don't mean to direct city manager, but city manager and staff can't act tomorrow, business day, then we're, you know, when are we having another meeting? So I think we should say, go ahead and try to find it and give a budget or, or an expectation of a cap.
What about the other details? So would, just so I would know what the expectation is. Are we talking about people in the park? And if so, you know, building in the police and fire staff hours to, to be able to cover that? Are we looking at a cap? Are we leaving it open? I just think there's quite a few details and with us being on the cusp, that's just an issue.
Number that we.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about budget, but, you know, the allocation of staff and.
I don't think we're going to be able to solve that tonight. I think the best we can do is, you know, ask, ask staff to come back in two days, three days and, and with what, what ifs are and we pull them. But we're not, nobody knows because no one's thought about this.
And that's exactly what I'm asking, to, to find out, you know, what, what can be done taking into account the details.
Authority to the recreation liaisons on the council to work with staff to figure it out.
I mean, is it going to be open to everyone or?
I, I would, I would.
That's my, I mean, that was my only concern at the last meeting because of, you know, some, I mean, it, it was lottery and then I thought some people would be mad. You know, you're just going to walk in the park and it's going to grab you with.
And how we would handle the public.
30% max at that point. We're going to be at minimum 60, 65% allowable, assuming June 15th, they don't go to, we're dropping all, all regulations.
For outdoor.
For outdoors.
Right, right. And would it be open to just residents or the public?
If it's, i- if it's come June 15th, when the, when the decision is made, it, it'll be as is what would normally be allowed.
Okay. I, I'm just looking for what.
And I'm looking for an opportunity for the city to get together and celebrate July 14th on the first of July. Not busting in.
We might be able to do July 14th.
We can do the 14th.
And, and I think it would be extremely important for the city to have an event at the first available opportunity. And this is the first available opportunity. This is something that, 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 that we can put together. I'm sure there's a book someplace in recreation with a whole list of things that need to be done. And we figure out what we could do on short notice versus what we can't do for whatever legal reason we can't do it. I, I, you know, how many officers we, we need there, how many fire, I mean, that's probably all in a book someplace that we need to pull out, dust off and take a look at.
So then, the, the city manager, on June 15th, you are expecting the county then to, from what you have been hearing at the recent meetings, to fully reopen outdoors with regard to capacity?
I don't expect any of the public health orders to be a bar to this event.
Okay. That's, that's encouraging.
I think. I, I mean, I, I, I think probably capacity limits are going away.
Okay.
I, I mean, the bar at this point is not the health order.
What do you see?
Well, the ability to pull any sort of event together in this brief a period of time, knowing that our firework vendor is not available or what bands might be available. It's, it's, it's not a lot of time to pull an event of this scope together. We also, there's probably a better way to say this, but we also released staff for that day. We normally have a hold on everybody. So I don't know who's available. There might still be people available. I'm not telling you that they're not. I just, we, we just don't know to have that many people in the park. We normally have crowd control, that sort of thing. But I, I don't expect that the health order is, is the issue, which is what we thought a couple of months ago. We thought it was possible we would get to this place. We just didn't think that we had the ability to plan it in that period of time. But if you want to give me direction to see what we can do, I appreciate what Councilmember Shepherd-Romney suggested. You would need to get, I'm, I'm trying to pull up the agenda when we talked about it before because I know we had the dollar number in there. My recollection is something like 75,000. We would also need you to appropriate that money because you directed us to pull it out for next year. So we, so part of the motion would be to appropriate it, put it back in the budget. As long as whatever we define under 30,000 and then I have the ability to execute that. Anything that came in over 30, obviously, I would need to come back for. So I guess it's just a matter of how you want to.
Or up to 75 with approval of the recreation liaisons.
Authority. So that, that can't.
But that would be a separate motion up to 75 with approval of the recreation liaison.
75,000 total, I can move. You can make today that would authorize me to spend $75,000 without the full council.
Why don't?
Can I make one comment, too, though, about the fireworks vendor? I would go back to the same one first. I know that they said that that's their date, but they also have, may have cancellations and they also may. So I'm just saying, you keep saying that that's not, but I would start there anyway because they know the drill here. They may say no and, but they also may want the business because they didn't give us last year. And they know this is easy for them because they've always been here. I'm just saying. So let's go to that first and make everything much.
I mean, how many days do you need to get this out?
I don't know.
Yeah, we don't.
I'll do whatever you tell me to do to the best of my ability.
Why don't you report to the, to the recreation liaisons on Friday as to the availability at that point? If, if we could always approve, then we need two business days for emergency meeting, special meeting.
24 hours.
24 hours. Well, then we could always schedule one for Saturday or Monday. We can schedule one for Monday and give whatever authority that is necessary.
Or we can schedule one for Friday.
Well, then I, she's going to report to the liaison.
And I might be able, I might be able to do it.
On Friday, you can report to the whole council.
It might be, whatever we can find might be doable without having to come back to the full council.
Of the don't schedule. So your suggestion there is then don't schedule an issue.
Right. My suggestion at this point is, I guess my suggestion at this point is, if you want to move ahead with this, the motion that you'd make today would be to, Finance Director, I'm looking down at you, appropriate $75,000 for the 2021 Fourth of July event, up to $75,000 to be distributed as it typically has been to hold a Fourth of July event. I guess that would be the motion. And then the direction would be go forth and see what you can do. And there's no, in normal times, there's no single expenditure that exceeds 30,000. So it's possible that that would be enough for me to just do it. There could be late fees, rush fees, that sort of thing that would push something over. And then on Friday, if we have the information by then, I could alert the liaisons. We could schedule a special meeting for, for Monday and make the decision. And we could do that via Zoom, whatever. Well.
So move.
Okay. Yeah.
Sorry, can, can I just make a, a quick clarification to that motion as the city code does also require that there's approval from the city council for the city manager to execute those agreements? So what I would suggest is perhaps a motion to appropriate $75,000 for the July 4th event this year and authorizing the city manager to spend up to and including that amount and execute related agreements.
So many.
That's what you said. Is there a second? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong.
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney. Councilmember Talt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski.
Yes.
Mayor Udi.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We move on. Do we have any written communications or public writings to distribution?
We do not have any.
Is there anyone wishing to speak at this time?
There are no requests for comment at this.
Would anyone like to add any items to another council meeting, not this council?
Not this one.
This is Vice Mayor Jacobowski's moment to ask for the artificial turf as soon as possible.
I think, yeah, I said that in passing, so that would be great.
I, I would like a, at least a, a report or, and it doesn't have to be written, just a, a report on when we should withdraw our emergency order for COVID. I don't know if that's going to be, have a financial effect on what we could do, but as I recall, the emergency order had in there that it was either when the LA County or the state removed it or by other direction of council. And, and so I will, if we no longer need that emergency report or emergency order, we should withdraw. So I would like that to be considered as, in our next agenda.
Sure.
Okay. Any other items? Five minutes late. We're adjourning this meeting.